We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call our meeting to order. And we're just going to review some agenda items for Thursday's meeting. I'm going to let, we have, someone likes to go first, so I'm going to let you introduce him, Mr. Davis.
Okay, Wes Miller is here to speak to you a little bit. Wes kind of led a group of first responders that ran some drills and scenarios at South Middle and North Middle the other day. It was really impressive. And he can't go into everything because some of it is stuff that only they need to know. But I wanted him to be able to come in and talk to you a little bit today because I really appreciate what he did and I'd like for y'all to hear who all came together and so we can, it's just, he did a really good thing and I appreciate him. So Wes, if you don't care, take a few minutes and talk about it a little bit.
Good afternoon, thank you for having me here. Just a little history with everything we've done. After the Sandy Hook shooting in 2013, we came together with the county to create a plan on active shooters. Decided it was best to involve as many people as we could, law enforcement, fire, EMS, school board. We've been on a regular basis for several months to create that plan, talking about training, preparation for an event, and how to actually prepare for it, how to respond to it, and how to basically link this up back to us. Once we got the plan set in place, we determined that we needed a few things to be able to get the ball rolling with it as far as equipment. Through county and city funding and Felix Martin grants, we were ready to purchase some equipment for every officer, basically an extra vest for protection to carry extra ammunition as well, make it faster for us to respond to an active shooter event. Another part of it was training. We decided we need to have some instructor certified in active shooter training to train the officers. So we sent five of us through instructor school to be able to train the officers, were certified through the Department of General Justice for that. The next thing was medical needs. We learned through studying some of the history of that with active shooters, the best thing that we can do is get medical support inside the school as fast as possible to help get injured people out. So we were able to work with the Sheriff's Department, and we have three paramedics that work for EMS, they're sworn through the Sheriff's Department's tactical mechanics. We've actually trained them in law enforcement tactics, so they can come into school with us and help get injured people out as quickly as possible. So once we started getting that, got everything rolling, then we decided, well, we need to focus a little bit more on teachers and staff. We know what we're going to be doing. Makes it better for us, easier for us if we can train the teachers and staff to do that as well. So they know what to prepare for and how to handle situations as quickly as possible to get kids in the safety of a situation. We learned that basically any kid that's behind a locked door has not been injured during an active shooter event. We trained the teachers and staff. We've been to every school. I was just talking to a parent just a minute ago, think we have to do, Alex walked away to go to your school and we're training as well. Other than that, we've been to every school in the county so far to actually do this training, prepared the teachers. I think had a good response from principals and teachers and staff. They took the training very seriously. They do pretty well with us. I've actually been going back with some of them during lockdown drills, and it's great to see that they're doing some of the steps we talked to do to prepare the kids for this. But I think one of the good things that come out is just basically partnerships. Been working great with Mr. Perkins. He has been phenomenal with helping us out, working with us. Anything that we need, anything that we want to try to do, he's like, yeah, let's try to do it. So he's worked well with us through all of this. Been very supportive to the school system, anything we've done with schools. We've got that partnership built and we keep building on it every time. As Mr. Davis was talking about, last Monday, we did an active shooter scenario, it was at North and South Middle, where we involved officers, fire department, EMS. We've had some teachers to call 911, so the 911 dispatchers can have some training for that as well. If anybody has any questions, go ahead.
The training has to be done every year?
It doesn't have to be. That's what we're pushing.
Okay, just in case anything changes or, great.
And the training with that is basically endless. We can come up with any kind of scenario, train the teachers. I think that you can make a, just talked to Mr. Perkins just a few minutes ago about some ideas to, so it's, it's something that we could, we could make happen every year during the first one.
Thank you, Wes. Above and beyond the upper kids. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much.
We're going to go down to the treasurer's report. Actually, minutes of the prior board meeting. Is there any questions on the previous minutes of the board meetings? Any changes that we might need to make out of? If not, we'll let Eric go over his treasurer's report if there's any questions about that.
I thought there would be a couple of things I'll just go over. I just might.
So on like the Ray John lighting?
Well, the Ray John's Park and the path, what they did is when they built that, under the advice of KU, they installed one centralized meter. The first year that it was built, the average kilowatt hours used was under the 50 kilowatt hours that allowed it to have the lower rate. Well, once they started ramping up ballgames and those sorts of things, they hit over the 150 kilowatt hours that jumped it to a new industrial rate essentially. Since that time, Tommy Barton, Steve Wells, and Kerry Davis, and me on occasion really, but mostly those three men have really been working with the Public Service Commission, KU, everyone we can to get, excuse me, a special ball field lighting rate installed. What we've done is basically, we were the first ones in the state to apply when it came open. So we kind of hit refresh on the website and we're, we are doing it just over and over and over again. So we were the first one in the state to apply. We got this rate. Now I'll say this next week too, but we got, they sent me a copy of our first bill. The first, it's a 45-day bill, but the first 30 days were approximately $3,400. But then the next 15 days was $400. So we've gone from about $3,500 to 400. Well, which, so if you annualize that, I mean, if you put out for the months, about $800. So I mean, it's been slashed. Now with that, there are some restrictions wherein it's going to be, they're going to have these little bit of scheduling things, but they're going to have to do, and I'm sorry, I don't want to drone on about this, but they can't turn on the lights until after a certain time of day. And if it gets turned on before then, we're going to get dinged and hit kind of back to where we were. So you get charged for that peak rate.
Just for that period or for?
For the next 11 months.
Oh, wow.
So why are we, as a school district, paying for anything at the ballpark?
That was an agreement that was done prior to, I guess it was?
So the public's money is going towards power bills?
That is correct.
At the park? And it's all because there's a box and there's not several boxes? I mean, I would think that maybe it could be rewired. So a couple of things?
We have investigated that. So we said, okay, what's it going to be the cost to rewire that? It's going to be, it was several hundred thousand dollars to rewire it. So in order to recoup our costs, it would have taken a very long time. So that's why we went the route of trying to get these rates. So I worked with my contacts at KSBA to get these lower rates that they also testified for us with the Public Service Commission to get those lower rates in place. So we now have a rate, which they kind of jokingly call the Mullenberg rate tariff.
Okay, so what else are we paying for that has absolutely nothing to do with education? I mean, I just, this is kind of off the cusp here. I'm just thinking, wow, KSBA, I mean, I think it's great that you're in contact with them, but my goodness. Are we paying the salaries out there too?
No. No, we?
We're just doing the power?
We do the power and then we?
What else?
We gave them one maintenance person.
Okay.
And a mower initially. And that was back when it was built, I believe it was in 2011 if I'm not correct.
The park?
That's correct.
Well, they, I think, did the grand opening in 2015.
Okay, well, when it was initially planned out, that's what was done. So there was a 99-year lease that was given for a dollar, you know, and that's, those were, those were?
That's the break the school district gets, is this right?
No, that's the break the school district gained. So, but that's what it was.
This is true. This is all true.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not against parks and rec, I just didn't realize that so much of it was put on the shoulders of the taxpayers to take care of the park through school board.
So the cost of the maintenance person that's out there, I mean, off the cuff, I mean, I'd have to do a little more research, but you know, that's generally with taxes and benefits, it's about a $25,000 annual cost.
Did y'all, did y'all know that we pay for the power out at the ballpark?
Well, I know it's in the agreement.
Anyway, paid some expenses.
Unfortunately for the last?
I always had the impression Felix Martin was taking on part of it at some point.
The last two years Felix Martin has paid for that bill, but that was, they, when they, when they saw the initial jump in the cost, they stepped in and said, we're going to help the school district out. So what I would do is I would submit basically the bills to Felix Martin Foundation, they would reimburse us. So we weren't actually out the higher bills. So we were very fortunate in that respect. Then they extended it for an additional year while Tommy, Steve, and Kerry were trying to get, get this rate in place. Now that we have this rate in place, you know, it went from about a $28,000 annual cost down to possibly 8,000. So I mean, got about 66% out of the cost.
But we've always paid for the maintenance person, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I'm more concerned about the power bill. I mean, why would you build a park that only has one box?
That was the, under the direction of?
Sounds like a racket.
When the engineers built it.
It's either all the power's on or all the power's off, right?
Pretty much. But then, later on in the year, the restrictions ease up. And Tommy can speak more to that, but it's in, it's around October, then you can turn the, you have more leeway when they turn the lights on.
When no one's using the park.
Well.
When it's not a popular place, right? So tell me, how many other school districts in the state take on a park like that?
That I couldn't tell you.
No, could KSBA, will you find that out with KSBA? If they know about the special Mullenberg rate, I'm curious to know what other school districts take on a park.
I don't know.
Thank you. Is there anything, any comments you want to make about the central office roof or the GPS?
The central office roof, essentially, we were able to knock about $20,000 off of that cost. We went back and said, the cost per square foot seems high, and they agreed with me. So they lowered their estimate for that. The GPS system, it's a, it's in the process right now. Used to be $6 a unit, now it's down to $1.79 per unit on each bus. And we'll also have the ability to turn the units off when school's not in session. So over Christmas break, fall break, spring break, the summer, we'll be able to turn those units off and then we won't be billed for that. So, and you know, just straight off the cuff, it's 66% reduction because it's, you know, that much, it's a third of the cost at this point. But then when we turn the, we're able to turn the units on and off, it should produce more savings. And then with the compensating tax rate, I brought the reports. If you'd like to go over those now really quick at all? Okay. You missing one? No, I got that one. Essentially with, as I've mentioned in the past, to go along with the plan, we're going to recommend the compensating tax rate this year, which will put the rate at 53.2%. That's up 0.5% from 52.7 the year prior. That is because the property valuation went down about 9 million, almost 10 million really. I've been in contact with the state and then I've also scheduled a, or I'm in the process of trying to schedule a meeting between Bill Allward and Mr. Davis and myself to kind of try to go over property valuations in the future so we can get a better predictor of that and make sure that we're going along. But with that said, the compensating rate again produces the same revenue as we received last year. Report two, just on the second page, basically, all that report tells you is that is the minimum rate that it would take in order for us to receive full Tier One SEEK funding. That's 45.6%. And that would produce, in real estate, revenue $5 million and general fund in 1.589. Report three and report four are basically how they calculate the property valuations. And in my communications with the state on report four, page four, line N is where we get that $9.99 million reduction in reevaluation of real property. And that's what I wanted to go and have a conversation with our PVA about and see what I need to do, you know, in the future just to help predict those things a little better and see where we're going with that. But this is not something that has to be advertised or voted on at this point. If we're going for the, with the compensating rate, I just need to turn in that information to the state, which our PVA, our local PVA and the Sheriff's Department appreciate because that's when we get, so we can get the bills out quicker so it doesn't, and it also helps us as a district out so we aren't receiving tax dollars later on in the year.
So new property is separate from the previous evaluation?
Correct. What they do is, in fact, if you look at line O, you know, the total valuation, they take line F and H, which line F is real estate and then the county real estate, H is PS County Real Estate. They take that and they subtract new property out of that to get that valuation. So then the state, the revenue cabinet gets all this information from our PVA and they plug it into their formulas, and that's how they determine the rate that we need to use in order to get the previous year's rate.
So that's where the point of O5 or .5 is going up? And then we still get additional money on the new property or is that all one number?
There, it's, I'm not certain of the total calculation, but yes, I mean, some of that property, the new property is calculated into that, but when they, that first year, they pull it off and then it gets added back in.
But the net result is we get the same dollar amount?
Correct.
As last year altogether?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. So the property value's going up, which seemed, I would thought would have been the norm, that the rate would have gone down for taxpayers to get the same amount.
To get the same amount.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's where attracting more industry helps us out significantly.
I think industry's going to look at how good our schools are. They want to look at our healthcare and they want to look at our schools. Are there any other questions on the treasurer's report? Anything you want to mention?
After we're done, I've got some sample bank price quotes to get to you on.
If there's any, any questions, we'll move on to the next item. Bills and salaries and school deals.
Bills and salaries this month is, we're bringing almost a million, but the majority of that is debt service. And that's our big payment of the year, really, $659,000. General fund was $212,000, which is pretty good. And fund two was $26,000 in construction, which was a payment for the longest roof
Down to the administrative report, superintendent report. You said you've got a PowerPoint or a presentation? You have a presentation for yours?
Just, well, no, I just, I want to kind of tell you what I'm going to try to do Thursday night. What I would like to do, I'm going to try to get, and I want to be able to do this as far as getting kids in here, it's a little bit, and recognizing some good things going on in our schools without lengthening the meeting so much that they're tired of hearing more good stuff. So I'll ask each principal to speak for about a minute or two, one or two minutes. Want to try that. Each, you know, especially we have a relatively short agenda, so I want to try that and let them tell you kind of how their, how their school year started, some good things going on in each school. I think that would be good to hear. And you know, if it gets too long or whatever, I'll try to adjust it over time. So I don't want to go forever, but that's my goal, is to get more good stuff in front of the folks, you know, a lot of good things going on. And I also, whichever school we're in, I think we're South Elementary on Thursday night. If it pleases the board, I would like to have that principal bring a student in to lead us in the pledge. And I think, you know, Grayson is ready to do that. I'll real quickly go ahead and say, you know, I've been very pleased with the opening of the school this year, but in all the schools, a lot of us have, and there's a, there's a good feel. And there's just, there's an upbeat thing going on and I'm just pleased. Everyone has just been such a help to me getting things going when it all comes to me to make the decisions and I'm the least informed one in the room at times, but I've got good people that are with kids in mind and schools in mind. So I've been very pleased with that. I'm excited about the year. I'm happy with where we are. A little bit of stressing news that I sent to you earlier, in last week's report, our enrollment was way down early. And Lee, where are we now with that? We're jumping, we're coming back quite a bit.
We're at 46, 48. So we gained?
About 100 more, I think.
92 since the Thursday school.
Yeah.
We're still down about 68 from last year, Thursday.
68?
So that's a little bit distressing, but not as distressing as the original number I gave you. He'll have a more up-to-date report Thursday.
I'll totally put it in.
I think they've all been in and got their amputations from me now, so we should be, we should be going in.
Take care of that. And that's all I have for now.
And there's the yearly data security address. Chad's going to talk to us about that Thursday. Personnel actions, is there anything, anybody has any questions about there? On the consider quality care contract?
I forwarded that memorandum of agreement to you, just a little bit of additional information. Their goal is really to reach kids who don't normally have a routine visit. And some of the parents, you know, they rely totally on these school exams that we do that are very brief and don't ever take on any full, any place further, you know, to make sure that they're okay. And sometimes they don't take them because of transportation or they can't afford the office visit, there's no insurance or whatever. So sort of like School Smiles, it works about the same way. Kids can come in, they can have their ears and eyes checked by qualified licensed physicians. And they extend, they've been extending services to children since 2000. And they assist like school nurses and family resource centers in being compliant with state requirements. But they will do a full eye and ear exam. Let me see, I had a few notes for this one, make sure I went over. They do bring their own equipment, just like School Smiles brings in their dental equipment. It says that they have state-of-the-art equipment. A child cannot be seen unless they have full parental consent to do so in writing. And parents will be notified if there's any problems or the child needs referral to their, to a regular physician here in the county. So copies of the results would be provided for the schools to put in the permanent records. And then a copy of the results would also be sent home to the parents. So there's absolutely like, children do not, if they don't indicate that they have had a previous eye exam and they see them, then they'll put them through some vision state stations where they'll do color testing, depth perception, acuity, and intraocular pressure and internal eye, they'll check their internal eyes. Then they'll see if they have diseases or birth defects that might be related for their eyes. They will prescribe glasses. They give them, they may actually get to get glass, like they'll get glasses like on the spot if they have what they need. But if they break their glasses during the year, they'll provide three, four pair for them through the year if they need it also. Now if they're insurance, if they don't have insurance, they see them anyway. And that's really the kids are trying to reach, the ones that don't have insurance and they write, write off their visit. If they do have insurance, copays are written off also. And then if there's any additional charge that the insurance will not pay, they write that off also. So there's no out-of-pocket money for the parents at all. So that's a really good part of the program too. Referrals will be directed, like I said, to other physicians if they need to. Now, Paducah Independent and Todd County have used the most of the closest ones. There are 40 school districts that have used quality care for kids. I did call Todd County. Todd County has used them for a number of years and they said that the only thing that bothers them sometimes is they can't get them scheduled in the fall. And the fall's really the best time to have those exams. Like this year, they couldn't get them scheduled to March. But they said for all the frustrations they have with scheduling, they're definitely worth the problems that they have with that. They recommended that, you know, we sign a memorandum of agreement with them. I did talk to Paducah Independent. They have a new nurse there. So she wasn't very familiar with the program, didn't know if they had the program. She asked somebody else, they didn't think they did, although it does say that they do. So they're checking into it further in their district to try to get to speed and let me know something at Paducah Independent. Another thing, just to let you know, policy and procedures, they basically, the forms are sent home to the parents and guardians and then they return them. UPS will pick them up, free charge to the district, all of their forms, what's their sign, so that they can set up appointments with the students. And then they'll determine their eligibility and whether they have insurance, whether they don't, figure out what to do from there and how they're going to treat them and what tests they need to have first. And then after all of that is done, they, like I said, they will file, they will bill the insurance and balances are written off. They just need a room. They can provide, they can even provide their own tables and chairs, if the school doesn't have them for them. So just like School Smiles, they just need space and they would like to have lunch at the school rather than have to go out so that they can get their appointments finished for the day. And they will not pull them from class at a particular time. And they will not pull them from class at a particular time if they're notified, do not pull them during this block of time because they'll miss a particular subject area. So they will honor that. The only other thing they ask for is maybe a helper that would keep the flow of traffic going with kids, but if a school can't provide that, you just let them know ahead of time, they'll bring an extra person to help and take care of that also. So it's really not a lot of trouble for the school other than providing the space. The Kentucky Department of Education Vision Entry Form for all kindergarteners will get those from them also. And then parents or guardians can choose not to participate at all and they just put not services, not needed at this time. Did you need any other information? I haven't heard more, if you don't need it, we're good.
That sounds good. Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
And the next one, student fees for the year 1718.
Every year, we, when there are changes, we bring a report for just the listing of the student fees for each school. So if there's a specific, you have a copy of that, you have a copy of the policy, you have a copy of site base allocations where those fees are in red at the top depending on the level of what is given to the schools. These are the issue files. It's kind of the same. And I think most of the principals are here if there's a particular question.
Thanks for putting these forward, Patty. We don't have to work for them. Any questions with the school fees? And the approval of district assurances, Mr. Davis?
Every year.
Every year?
The board is required to approve through KDE the district funding assurances. This is a superintendent action that Mr. Davis has requested I head up for him. The KDE developed a new role this year as District Funding Assurances Director. So we have successfully signed me up for that role so I can do the activities and things in the, in the network and in the interface. With the passing of ESSA and implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act, the assurances are larger than they have been in the past. And as you review them and look at them, you'll see that they cover lots and lots of different areas as you're aware of. Additionally, this year, we have preschool and food services in there as well. It is rolling out to where the state and federal government is combining all of these activities in this area, which makes sense because we're looking at the whole development of children from the beginning to career readiness. So if you see more in there and if you notice that, that's the reason for that. All areas are in compliance and all supervisors and directors have reviewed their individual areas and have gotten back to me to make sure that I had marked those ones correct. This is an action item on Thursday night, you need to vote and then we need to get something signed off and I'll log in and get it updated for everyone on Friday morning. That is how it goes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on the district assurance? And consider the memorandum of agreement with Hopkins County for services for the visual impaired.
I do, sorry about that. We discussed this back in July and I would like to have only discussed it once, but the way their board met in July prevented us from getting all the information we needed and we really couldn't wait because the teacher has already made here this school year to make sure our kids' visual insurance are up and running. So at the last board meeting, you approved this agreement up to at least $6,500, but we have more accurate information now and it's actually closer to $12,000. That is coming out of federal special education monies and so really I just need you to understand to vote for the one because these kids need the services.
So I just, we gave a certain amount and then anything over that had to come back across, so that's all. Is there any questions regarding the visual impaired services? Okay, the next is consider partnership with Western Kentucky University. I always have to say this, Confucius Institute for Chinese Teacher at Greenville Elementary for the 1718 school year. It gets me every time.
I was contacted by Charles Prophet. You all have some documents in your folders, but of course he works with the Confucius Program and he contacted me about the possibility, opportunity I should say, to place a Chinese teacher in our building. I was antifaced in checking into that in the future. I was hoping this year to get them to visit Central City Elementary because they already have one in place and of course North Middle now does, but Mr. Prophet contacted me because the Chinese teachers can only teach 300 minutes in the school. And the needs for the teacher at North Middle went beyond that, so they needed a second teacher placed. So that would allow us to have the teacher for 234 minutes at Greenville Elementary. So I'm hoping that you all will. It is no cost to the district, it is important to include.
I think we have the Chinese teacher on our schedule this year. We're a little nervous about that at my house.
My son actually has her this night, so I've been interested in asking him in the couple of days and he actually...
Well, he started out calling her Zulily and I said, I'm not sure why that he calls her Zulily, like I never shop there, you know, so he was calling her Zulily. But he is kind of excited about it though, but nervous, so.
And I will throw this out here, it's kinda, I'll talk about it a little more Thursday night, but we got a distressing phone call last Friday, I think, maybe, Thursday or Friday, Thursday, from Western Kentucky University that said, and I'm sorry to tell you, but since you're not in session, we can't provide the solar glasses. Well, we didn't, we weren't aware of that. There was no emails, no communications all along, you know, all the way through. And after talking to him, he said, you can't change my mind on this because Warren County did the same thing and we couldn't get them for them. So after, after much discussion and he said, I have them for 50 cents apiece so we can get, you know, we can work with you there at cost, but that's still about $2,500 and we promised them. So we're in kind of a bind there and I'm not sure exactly why, but he said, are you connected with Confucius Institute? I said, yes, we are. And he said, well, he gave me a name and number and he said, if you'll call this person. He picked, they picked up the cost for Warren County. And Melody called him the next day and, and they graciously agreed to pick up the cost for, for all the, all the kids here. So being connected with Confucius Institute paid, paid off there and I'm not sure exactly why he did that. We didn't really ask. We just know that they did.
All right, good deal. Are there any questions regarding the Chinese teacher placement at Greenville? You said they could take 300 minutes?
300 minutes is the maximum.
At North Middle, we're at 327. Whenever I sent them our schedule and they tallied it up at 327, we already had our schedule in place. We could have, the other alternative was give her a second planning period, but Mr. Prophet said that he would rather we could, they actually had somebody that they didn't get placed and that he could have somebody immediately agreeable if Stacy wanted to come on board. So we had a Plan A and a Plan B on that, but, and I talked to Mr. Prophet and I was like, those 300 minutes mean 300 minutes, you know, you know, hey, we, you know, how things can, he said, yes, pretty much. He said that 27 minutes doesn't seem like a lot, but it goes back to the contract and things like that.
All right, and down to the board consent agenda, leave of absence request, any questions regarding those? If not, we're gonna approve four member hours for attending the KSBA Summer Leadership Institute, WKEC Training and Second Region Meeting. We're down to facilities use, any questions? And then fundraisers, there is gonna be one I would like to add to the agenda Thursday night that was late coming in. I think teacher was hired late or maybe new and tried to get into the swing of things and, so it's, it's a fundraiser, right?
Book fair for grandparents.
Book fair for grandparents' day, so I'm gonna ask that we add that to the agenda on Thursday night. And then fundraiser and field trips, any questions on those? Is there anything we didn't cover that anybody wants to talk about?
Just really briefly, I'm gonna pass these down to you. This is the, excuse me. I was asked to just post together some sample bank, bank bids, but really since banking is a professional service, we just receive quotes, so it's not really a bid process. However, we do ask them to provide basically a quote on, on what their, what their services would cost the district. And we also, I solicited several different districts, they're ones that they've, they've used and I've tried to do a little best practices from each of them. Just in this packet, all I've done is I've, I've taken some of the highlight, highlights on some of these and I've highlighted them in green. The highlights in yellow are basically just for my own reference where if, you know, those are dates that will have to change when, if and when we do move forward with this. It does say acceptable banks or they have to have a location here in Mullenburg County. We did ask that banks are encouraged to demonstrate creativity in their proposals to offer the board any additional services that, that they might deem beneficial to the board. So basically, we want to give the banks an opportunity to say, hey, have you thought of this? Which, you know, I don't have all the answers for this, but if, if this is something where we can work with our, our local bankers to provide, you know, top-notch service, then that's what we wanna go for. If we do decide to move forward this, we'll, we'll put this out sort of like a, like a bid and we'll have a deadline for submitting these quotes. They'll be opened up in public just the same. I'll present them to the board and it'll be the board's pleasure as to what they decide to do with that.
So this is the current quote, how we word them, whenever we were looking into...
No, this is not the current. I mean, what this is, is I took and tried to, well, I tried to locate some of our old bids and I didn't see them. So what I did is I just kind of took this and I, I asked other districts, I said, what was your, you know, last bid that you did and how did you do it? I mean, I got anything from a 10-page bid to a one-page bid.
I'd like to see a 10-page. This says, it just says valid from July 1, 15 to June 30, 17, the length of agreement. So that's what made me think, well, this is what we're currently under even though it's expired.
No, no, I'm sorry.
That this is kind of a sample of what we're already...
This, this is a sample of what could go out. And so the, the dates on them are really negligible. Would it, would it be, it'd be a two-year or really a, really a 30-month agreement at this point? Because if we do decide to go, move forward, we could either go with a 1-1 date to like the end of fiscal year, two years later, well, two and a half years later, or we could decide to postpone that and make it a 7-1 date. Again, it's, that's up, that's entirely up to the board. I just, this is what I was, what I've pulled together for you all to take a look at and just review over the next few days and if you, if the board tells me to pull the trigger on this, I will gladly do so. And this is something where Ms. Wells, if this is, if you see something in here that would help me out to, to do this, I would be very open and receptive to your suggestions or anyone's suggestions really.
We've probably got the old one at the bank. I'll see if I can find you.
I don't know if it was just in the transition period, I'm just, I'm still looking.
It's not a conflict of interest to use the bank in which you're employed with?
It's not, but I will abstain from anything related to this.
But that was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, I need a motion to, I don't like a motion. Motion by Ms. Wells. Second amendment, is it all in favor of the chairman?
Uh, uh.